Commissioner, meeting minutes for December 29th, 2017, and January 2nd, 2018.
Move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Communications?
We have several, I'm gonna read them all and then we'll vote in the end. First one is the Nutley High School Hockey Booster Club has submitted an event application to hold their street fair on Sunday, June 17th, 2018, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Franklin Avenue. The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application for their annual 5K fun run to be held on Sunday, May 6th, 2018, from 9:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation has submitted a social affair permit application for their casino night event to be held on Friday, April 27th, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00. And the Nutley Irish American Alliance has submitted an event application for their 40th St. Patrick's Day Parade to take place on Saturday, March 3rd, 2018, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Franklin Avenue. And the Southside Grill, Lunawood Fire Tavern has submitted an application for an extension of premises for an event to be held Saturday, March 3rd, 2018, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The Nutley Bellwark Columbus Day Italian Heritage Committee has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, March 18th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 44 Park Avenue on Sunday, October 7th, 2018, from 3:00 p.m. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade report for the month of January, 2018.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, we have our public safety report that we got requested at the last meeting. It has calls of service in here, medical calls. At this time also, I'd like to say that I had a meeting with the chief this morning, and I'm very proud to say that the overall crime has declined in Nutley by 13% compared to last year. So this is the report, it's handy to all the residents, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bills, Mayor Clark?
Yes, Mayor, bills for February 6th, 2018. Public Affairs, $1,704.23. Revenue and Finance, $7,269,283.82. Public Safety, $110,565.24. Public Works, $104,363.68. Parks and Public Property, $736,926.89. Water Utility, $95,492.14. Total Payroll, $860,156.6 for a grand total of $9,178,492.6.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clark?
Yes, Mayor, all persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Cory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, under one of your resolutions, made agenda items, the price of $10,000 to Irozina, what is that for specifically?
That's anticipated litigation.
Isn't that covered under, that would be part of Mr. Janet Temple, I believe, wouldn't that be part of the, as, the attorney?
Mr. Janet Temple, you wanna answer that?
Is this additional, that's what I'm trying to find out?
This isn't, this is additional litigation that we are gonna be involved in. I do not have an expertise in those zoning issues, it's a zoning matter, and is not covered under my agreement with the Commissioners to do litigation.
But if it's under, I guess, I guess, the question I'm gonna be asking, this is for anticipated litigation?
It's for, other than, yes, something that's coming up, that we're gonna be defending.
Potentially in zoning, which is not your expertise.
Correct.
So why are you hiring, why are you hiring your own block firm if that doesn't seem?
Because the Commissioners have decided that Mr. Sefeli, who was an expert in land use with over 35 years of land use, litigation and experience, is the right person. That's the reason they decided to hire him. Our firm is not being hired, Mr. Sefeli's been hired.
And this is for no specific litigation at this time?
Yes, it is, there's a specific matter that we anticipate being engaged in very quickly. It will be, it will be revealed very shortly.
Oh, well, okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on the agenda items only?
Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue, and thank you very much, Director Petracca, for your report, it's very interesting. I'm glad to hear that crime is down, year over year, and actually, I guess, emergency services. I do have a question about drug overdoses, Narcan, would that be something that could be reported? Seems like it would be of interest to the population to understand.
What was it, drug, and what?
Oh, drug overdoses, the use of Narcan, that sort of thing.
I know there are limitations of what we can put out there publicly, especially when there's a pending investigation going on, but I could check and see, you know, what we can release in that field, if we can.
It's a great report, very, very interesting, I think it will make people feel very good, and it sort of ties into the National Council for Home Safety and Security. Nutley ranks at 1.19 average violent crime per 1,000, which is less than the New Jersey ranking of, or percentage of 2.41. And 8.89 for average property crime per 1,000 versus New Jersey at 14.96. So, we're looking pretty good.
I appreciate you coming up and saying that, thank you.
And I have one other topic, this is Commissioner Evans, in terms of the property tax rebate from a tax court judgment of $44,207.88, 460 Franklin Avenue. And if I understand, if I got it right on Google Map, that is an apartment building, I think that looks like it has some sort of office or retail space as well. And I'm just curious, because I thought that tax appeals were based on recent sales of comparable properties. So how would this appeal have gotten through at such a large number?
It depends on whether it's a tax court appeal, or was it the Essex County Tax Board?
It just says tax court judgment.
And so, so it was at the Essex County level?
It says, yeah, county, not the county, I don't actually know, it doesn't define it here, it just says successful tax court judgment.
Yeah, so, you know, we would have, as Nutley, our assessor would have assessed the property, and they, the owner of the property can appeal at assessed value, and whatever that determination was, and in this particular case, it went before the Essex County Tax Board, with their witnesses and testimony as a hearing process, and it was ruled in favor of the applicant.
Great, so I've been to the tax board, and I've also read the requirements to file an appeal. What I'm saying is, you have to file based on recent sales, that's what they use as a reference, they don't use assessed value of properties. If they did, everybody would be in tax court, comparing neighbors.
Starting point is the assessed value of the property, and then the dispute would be based upon recent sales, or whoever they hired as their expert to look at comparable values and recent sales would argue that based upon those sales, the assessed value should be lower. In this particular case, they won.
Okay, so who represents Nutley in these, the tax assessor and attorneys?
Yes, we actually have the tax assessor, Ed Brown, we have our own appraiser, who actually helps value their properties, that would be Mark Hendricks, who's a seasoned expert in that particular case, and then we'd be represented by legal counsel, who's Frank's there.
I guess it would be interesting to know, how much were they going for, and did they get the full amount, or?
I don't have that information.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's not here. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only?
Michael Odria, 133 High Street. This goes back to this Narcan question, after these investigations are done, these situations where Narcan gets why administered, will they be part of this report, eventually?
I could look into, see if it could be released, Michael. A lot of times, like I said before, there are pending investigations, and there's even HIPAA violations now, and things like that, so I have to just check with the prosecutor's office, and see what could be released in these reports, as far as that.
Yeah, because the reason why I ask is, it would be nice to know for the good people of this town to find out, like, how many times these kids are being used in this town, of 3.4 square miles.
I could tell you it's more than you think, and I have to commend, you know, our Nutley and all of our public safety. I mean, the cops have brought several people back with that Narcan, it's an unbelievable tool, and it has saved people's lives. Actually, they've used it, I had a family living in my own building, above the deli, and the kid was having an issue with drugs there, and the police department came in, and I have to say, the kid was blue. And this is probably eight, nine years ago at least, and today, he's married with his own kids, he's really turned his life around, and it really gave him a second chance at life, so it's, you know, it was really an incredible story, and a strong, you know, act of God, and great training and response with the police department.
But also, there's self-discipline on the person themselves, because the town, the county, and the state can't really control what people do. But, do you have an idea how many times it was used to save someone in December of 2017? Can you give that number?
I, I, I wouldn't want it as 12, you know, without having the facts, Mike, you know, but I could tell you, I mean, it's, I mean, there's no secret, you know, drugs are an epidemic everywhere, and, you know, they do use it quite a bit.
Okay, because, you know, I think it would be good for the people of this town to know how many times it was used in this town, so we know how bad, or how not so bad the situation is in this town, compared to other towns.
Well, I, I, I don't.
Because honestly, I didn't know there was a big heroin, or whatever, open problem in this town until...
Mike, the lines...
Because I, even though I lead a, you know, I'm a musician, I never did drugs in my life, believe it or not, I've never done pot, or coke, or heroin, you know, I just, self-discipline. And I like to know what my surrounding town is.
Yeah, I could tell you this, I mean, you know, I don't know what the neighboring towns, or the new cities, you know, they have, they have more people there, but I could tell you, you know, as you know, the drugs don't discriminate, the drugs are everywhere, including Nutley, unfortunately, and, you know, that's why, when I got elected in 2008, I started that Hope Committee, and tried to, you know, put a parameter around what's going on, and how your kids could benefit, how to be proactive as a parent. So we try to do a lot of preventive measures, you know, and educate the parents, if little Johnny comes home and you think there's a suspicion, we hope that it doesn't grow to the heroin. But, like I said, unfortunately, the drugs are everywhere, including here.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard on agenda items only? All right, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements, Commissioners?
I have a few, Mayor.
Commissioner Tucci?
My first announcement this evening is, last Thursday evening, we held our Relay for Light, Life kickoff at the Parks Department, we had well over 100 people attending, our goal, again this year, is to raise $100,000. We had many of our past chairpeople there, as well as our Nutley angel, Ann Rotunda, who is under treatment herself, but came out with a surgical mask and covered so that she didn't infect anyone else, nor did she get infected to participate, so we were very happy about that, and we're always glad to see Annie, so thank you, Annie, for being there. The second announcement this evening is, the re-turfing of the Father Glot's Backfield has in fact been completed, if you get a chance, take a, take a ride over there, take a walk on the field, it's wonderful, and we hope it's gonna last us many, many years, the last one lasted us over 11 and a half years, I believe it was about. My last announcement this evening is, at our next meeting, which is the 20th of the month, we will have a resolution honoring the Merritt family, Dave Merritt has been, has taken another position in the National Football League with the Arizona franchise, he'll be leaving the Giants, and we need to honor and recognize David Yolanda and the entire family. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I'd just like to comment, if I can, about today's, you know, travels over to the road site, if that'd be okay. I, you know, we went to the Roach Campus and visited Modern Meadow today, I guess the biochemical, chemical company they are, and, you know, they've been growing leather, you know, without killing animals, and I have to tell you, you know, being in there when Roach announced that they were leaving, and to being able to walk through that site and see progress was just overwhelming to me. It seems like it's, it's growing into a little Silicon Valley, that little slice over there, the people that I met today, the CEO, the people that are working in that company, I really, really think that the road site is on its way, and it's such an exciting time, and it's such an exciting time to see a company like Modern Meadow go in there, and even the employees that are there, and the way they're conducting business is a lot different than we were used to, seeing people kind of in casual attire, and seeing young people run these businesses. It's really, it was really refreshing to me, I think everybody on the Board has done a great job to attract companies like that, and I'm just looking forward to what it's gonna look like in the future, and I'm looking to be good neighbors with these companies that are coming in. And in closing, it's unbelievable, the response that we get from these companies, of how they want to be part of the, of the Nutley community. So I think we're on a good track, and I think we're on our way, I think everybody's doing a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner, I would like to say that, you know, they have 70 employees working there now, which was surprising, I think, to all of us, right, that they had that many people working there. And they're all young, and all PhDs, and they're eventually going to need support staff to help them, so there's gonna be job opportunities for our residents, and they look to grow to somewhere in four to five years to 250 employees, so it was pretty exciting that. And we got to see how the, all the technology, which we really didn't understand, but it looked, it looked nice. Any other announcements? I have one announcement, last Tuesday, we switched over to Baso picking up the co-mingle, and went fairly smoothly last Tuesday, they went a little late in the night picking up some of the recycling, but they caught up, caught up to speed pretty quick last week, and they were done today by about 2:00 in the afternoon, so that seems to be going well, and hopefully that will be seamless to our residents. Just ask you that you have your recycling out at 6:00 a.m., because they do go to work a little earlier than DPW, so. Let's move to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Town of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A attached here too, an incorporated hearing, is no longer needed for public use, and whereas the Local Unit Technology Pilot Program and Study Act also authorizes the sale of surplus personal property, no longer needed for public use through use of an online auction service, and whereas the Township of Nutley intends to utilize the online auction services of propertyroom.com, and whereas the sales are being conducted pursuant to the Division of Local Government Services Local Finance Notice 2008-9 and 2008-21R, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the township is hereby authorized to sell surplus property as indicated in Schedule A at an online auction website entitled propertyroom.com. Two, the terms and conditions of the agreement entered into between propertyroom.com and the Township of Nutley are available at propertyroom.com and in the Township Clerk's office. And three, a certified copy of the resolution be forwarded to the Township Clerk to the following, and also the following, Chief of Police, Chief Financial Officer, and Schedule A includes, one 2002 Dodge Murano 4x4 with 85,618 miles, and one 1998 Bluebird bus model F-1234502, 20, 29 passenger, with 131,652 miles. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor, if, with your permission and Township Attorney's permission, I'll consolidate the next several resolutions, they are awarding bids for recreation uniforms, equipment and supplies, they're all coming out of the same amount, I will identify each vendor. Yes, okay. Whereas sealed bids received for recreation uniforms, equipment and supplies on January 10th, 2018, in the Township of Nutley, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, New Jersey, recommend that a contract for recreation uniforms, equipment and supplies be awarded to the following companies, BSN Sports, Jenkentown, PA, in an amount not to exceed $25,992. DOT Design, 242 Possum Hollow Road, Monroe Township, not to exceed $21,000. Metuchen Center, 10 Embroidery Street, Sayerville, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed $8,692.25. R&amp;R Trophy and Sporting, 104 Ridge Road, North Arlington, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed $3,250. Triple Crown Sports, 18 Throckmorton Lane, Obridge, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed $2,400. And whereas funds are available from accounts T-24909-901 through 915, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Township Clerk be, and they are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contracts with the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. I move the resolutions.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the Park Avenue Monopole co-location lease were received and opened on November 30th, 2016, and whereas Verizon was awarded a contract by the Township of Nutley through Resolution 27-17, and whereas a bid security deposit was received from New York SMA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, One Verizon Way, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, in the amount of $3,246. And whereas the parties have mutually agreed to cancel the contract due to the terms and conditions of contract being non-resolved, and whereas a refund in the amount of $3,246 should be authorized from account C-01-902-901, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund $3,246 to New York SMA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, One Verizon Way, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, for the bid security payment. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has determined the need to dispose of certain municipal vehicles and equipment that are no longer useful, and/or have come to the end of their practical term of services, and whereas the Township of Nutley has identified the following vehicles and equipment that are no longer practical to continue in service with the township, and whereas the Township of Nutley has gone out to bid on September 19th, 2017, Resolution Number 200-17, and received no offers on such vehicles and equipment as they are no longer needed and/or usable by the township, and whereas the Township of Nutley has received an offer from www.busesforsale.com in the amount of $6,750, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, request that the vehicle and equipment mentioned above are to be sold to www.busesforsale.com in a manner compliant with local county and state policy, and once again, that's for a 2006 Bluebird bus, 24 passenger with the chairlift. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, will you take Commissioner Rogers' resolution also?
I will. For Commissioner Rogers, whereas pursuant to an agreement with the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Family Service Bureau, a food pantry in order to provide services to residents exists, whereas the township must authorize payment for the provision of said services, whereas funds are available in account 801-120-209, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the 2018 budget, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley hereby authorize payment of $25,000 to the Nutley Family Service Bureau for the provision of services to residents effective January 1, 2018, through December 31st, 2018. Be it further resolved that the payment made in full will be dispersed in June, 2018, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of $44,207.88 for said year due to successful tax court judgments for the lots and blocks listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $5,502.72 for the lots and blocks listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the state of New Jersey statute 54:4-3.3 provides that war veterans who were honorably discharged from active service in a time of war, in any branch of the armed services of the United States, who have been or shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration to be 100% permanently disabled in connection with their wartime service, be granted full tax exemption of their dwelling and the lot in which it is situated. Whereas the following, taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that John T. Barry be granted full exemption from payment of property taxes from January 22nd, 2018, and all subsequent years thereafter on the property identified as Block 5201, Lot 12, also known as 143 Watchon Place, be further resolved that the Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund $5,516.9 for 2018 property taxes previously paid, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Whereas the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse established in the Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse in 1989, to educate and engage residents, local government and law enforcement officials, schools, not-for-profit organizations, and faith community parents, youth and other allies in efforts to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse in communities, drew out in New Jersey, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
This next Resolution 40-18 is a pretty cool resolution, it's where two, I believe, grammar school kids found $200 bills and gave it to the crossing guard, she then came to the police department and handed it in, and I think that's the honorable thing to do, and after so long, if no one claims the money, the kids are entitled to the money, so I think it was very honorable of the kids to give that back, try to hand in the money that was missing, that they found. So whereas on November 16th, 2016, Diane Sibelli, the crossing guard at Chestnut and Prospect, came to the Nutley Police Department, would found property, and whereas two students, Ian Brown and Armand Serafino, gave her, gave her, Diane Sibelli, the found property of $200 bills that they found on the ground. Whereas the $200 bills were deposited into an account number 1-15-908-901, and whereas the legal time for someone to declare ownership, six months has been completed, and all legal requirements have been satisfied. Whereas the finders of this money, Ian Brown and Armand Serafino, are now entitled to this found money, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township and Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Nutley Township Treasurer will make payment to Ian Brown and Armand Serafino by check via mail for $100 each. I proudly move that resolution, resolution, gentlemen.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Nutley Police Department, Township of Nutley is interested in hiring an outside agency to oversee the police off-duty detail management system, and whereas the Nutley Police Department is issuing a request for proposal on February 16th, 2018, to an agency who are qualified to oversee the police off-duty detail management system, and whereas the request for proposal will be advertised in the local newspapers, whereas there is no fee involved in hiring an agency to oversee the system, and whereas proposals and qualifications statements are due to the Township Clerk on February 28th, 2018, no later than 3:00 p.m. for qualified agencies, and be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township and Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the municipal clerk... of New Jersey, that the municipal clerk be and hereby authorized and directed to advertise for requests for proposals for police off-duty detail management system services. Be it further resolved that the request for proposals shall be due on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, three P M, addressed to the municipal clerk, Township of Nutley, Town Hall, one Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, zero seven one one zero. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the Township of Nutley through the Department of Public Works has a need to acquire the services of an engineering consultant as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of N J S A nineteen colon forty-four A twenty point four or twenty point five as appropriate. And whereas the engineering coordinator has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate service provided by the vendor for the term of the contract will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Whereas the anticipated term of the contract is for twelve months from January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Whereas Penoni Associates has submitted a proposal dated January third, two thousand eighteen, indicating they will provide engineering services according to a fee schedule attached. And whereas Penoni Associates has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Penoni from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas the contract is not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand for the general engineering services. And whereas funds are available from the account eight dash oh one, four oh four, two hundred, subject to the adoption of the two thousand eighteen municipal budget and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with Penoni Associates that is described herein, and be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification determination of value is be placed on file with this resolution. And be it further resolved that a notice of this action may be printed once in the Nutley Senate, accordance with the local public contracts law. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas pursuant to N J S A forty colon sixty-seven dash twenty-three point two, and as required by law, the township has elected to provide municipal services to the Cambridge Heights at Nutley Umbrella Associates in the same manner as the township provides such services on public roads and streets in the township. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley in the County of Essex as follows. One, the Mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into a two thousand eighteen municipal service agreement with the association in a form approved by the Township Attorney. Two, a copy of the resolution as well as the municipal service agreement shall be placed on file with the municipal clerk and a notice of this action may be printed once in the Nutley Senate. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Nutley PBA Local Thirty-three, license number four dash eighteen, Off Premise Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle to be held Thursday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Nutley Music Booster Association, license number five eighteen, On Premise Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle, license number six dash eighteen, On Premise Merchandise Raffle to be held Saturday, March seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day and Heritage Committee, license number seven dash eighteen, On Premise Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle, license number eight eighteen, On Premise Merchandise Raffle to be held Sunday, March eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day and Heritage Committee, license number nine dash eighteen, Off Premise Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle to be held Sunday, October seventh, two thousand eighteen. Saint Mary's Church, license number ten dash eighteen, Calendar Raffle, first Saturday of every month from July seventh, two thousand eighteen, to June first, two thousand nineteen. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that Jonathan Bruno be appointed the public defender for the Township of Nutley effective January first, two thousand eighteen, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain the services of an attorney to provide legal advice and services in connection with the township's land use policy and litigation. Whereas N J S A forty A colon eleven five one A one permits the award of contract without public bidding. And whereas Angelo Sefeli Junior of the Law Firm of Pirros Zina Sefeli Paris in Genotempo, three sixty percent given in Nutley, New Jersey, will be contracted at the amount of one hundred and ninety dollars per hour, not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars. Whereas the funds are available from count number eight dash oh one dash oh one two dash two oh five, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the two thousand eighteen municipal budget. Where the anticipated term of the contract is for twelve months from January first through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Whereas the Law Firm of Pirros Zina Sefeli Paris in Genotempo has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Angelo Sefeli Junior of the Law Firm of Pirros Zina Sefeli Paris in Genotempo as a professional service. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and notice in accordance with the local public contract law of New Jersey in the form attached heretofore shall be published in the Nutley Senate. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide your name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Maybe I'd like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening.
Tammy Rossi, twenty-eight Colonial Terrace. So the impact of multifamily development on school enrollments has been documented. And with that recently, a member of the Board of Education stated, maybe stated, requesting consideration of the impact on the schools with further approval on building of multifamily. Tomorrow evening, on the agenda for the planning meeting, I understand, will be the proposed apartments over the Valley National Bank. And so my question to you tonight is, are you going to adopt a density for mixed use before any more of these multifamily dwellings are approved? I understand last April, the Subcommittee for the Zoning Board made recommendations regarding just this. In fact, we were recommending thirty-five apartments per acre for one unit for one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of the lot size. And now we would get three floors and create a commercial on the first floor. This was recommended almost a year ago. I'm just wondering, why is it taking so long to adopt this definition? And when will you adopt this definition?
Ms. Rossi, I just want to correct you on the planning board. That is not on for a hearing tomorrow. That's only here, that's only on the agenda for scheduling tomorrow. So I don't want people to come out tomorrow and think that there's going to be a hearing.
Well, that's even better, because then that gives you time to adopt the definition. So that is my question. When will you?
Unfortunately, once an application is received, even if we were to adopt a policy or an ordinance, it wouldn't apply to that project. Just to make that clear. Is that correct, Mr. Genotempo?
I believe that is correct.
In addition, we have received the density application from the Planning Board Subcommittee with approval of the Planning Board, and that's being considered. And we did want our new planner to take a look at that. He's been kind of held up with looking at the Roche property at this point. So, but that is something that we are definitely going to consider by this board. We want to see what we can do to control the density of these multifamily dwellings. And if we need to change the ordinance, we're going to do that.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I might, if I might, Tammy, I am actually in the process of drafting an ordinance, all right, which you can't call, the zoning law does not allow you to declare a moratorium on building. But it does allow you to, for lack of a better word, create a pause so that we can assess the impact not only on our water system and our sewer system, but also the impact on the schools and everything else at large, all right? And I agree with you. I think we do need a number for density. I haven't seen that, but I am also going to be asking as part of that ordinance that the study include that as well as anything else that any of the commissioners would recommend. I was not happy to hear this evening that that application, even for scheduling, wasn't in fact submitted, because now that's off the boards as far as my proposed ordinance is concerned, all right? But I would hope that reasonableness will prevail, all right? And we don't overload the number of units, not only at that site, but anywhere else in town.
Especially with Chicaglini as well, since we don't know what's going to happen.
Applies to all, correct.
But regarding what you just said about impact on infrastructure, isn't that what developer fees are meant to cover? And if so, why are, are we not collecting developer fees at this point?
We have collected developer fees in the past.
Have you been?
We have in the past. I don't want to say we've collected them on every application. We have in the past.
How do you make a determination of whether or not you collect developer fees, especially with these multifamilies and their impact on our infrastructure?
Well, it's, and as you said, it's on infrastructure. So that's water, sewer, streets. Those are things that you can assess, but schools are not included in that, as I understand. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Genotempo.
I believe you are correct.
In addition to Commissioner Tucci's concern, Mr. Genotempo, can you take the recommendation of the Planning Board, make sure it gets distributed to all the commissioners?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hi, Amy Solento, Seventy Newman Avenue. And going back to a prior meeting, Commissioner Evans, you spoke about the fact that this year you will use a zero-based budgeting approach for the municipal budget. So my understanding is from the definition of zero-based budgeting is that all expenses must be justified for each new period, and allocates funding based on program efficiency and necessity. And I also understand that in practice, it better aligns spending targets with required activities of a function, and it prevents embedding of existing spend in cost base. Does that sound about right? Great.
Yep.
So last meeting I attended, there was a resident, and he's here tonight, he spoke about a wireless phone bill that was in the thousands of dollars for one department in the town. So when you look at that bill, there are people who have phones assigned to them, and their bill is seven hundred dollars a month. Four people have a six hundred some dollar bill a month. There's an iPad that has over, that has nine hundred dollars of data usage. So the first thing I want to say is that, right on the bill, it says, watch, talk, text, and save with a budget. And it says, visit us online at A T T dot com slash business. So I just went to that site, and the scrolling offers say that for fewer than forty dollars a month, you can have unlimited talk, text, and data. That's a business plan. So when you look at this bill, which shows a previous balance of twenty-seven hundred, shows a current amount, and a past due amount, so total, it's six thousand dollars, some of it's past due, but their new charge is of five thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. So if you take eighteen lines, which are on here, you multiply it by less than forty or forty, that's seven hundred and twenty dollars. That's significantly less than six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. So I would ask that in this zero-based budgeting process, that each department kick off an audit of their expenses, really, something like this immediately. I mean, this should not be continued. And that all of our employees think of the fact that they are stewards of our tax dollars. This is not just, you know, I have phone calls to make, and it doesn't matter who pays for them.
Amy, not seeing that bill that's in front of you, those monthly charges don't necessarily have to be data and usage. They could be equipment.
Okay, I agree with you, Mayor. And I will tell you that it does say that there are three iPhone tens, iPhone Xs, that are leased here. And those are seventy dollars a month, thirty-five dollars a month, and twenty-eight dollars a month.
Not having the detail of that in front of me, or the detail, I don't know if you have the detail in front of you, we can't really, I can't really address it. But I will address it.
And I appreciate that, because I really, again, I'm just seeing line items of detail per user. And these charges are exorbitant, and, you know, I have a cell phone bill for myself personally, and one for my business. You can look at it every month. It doesn't change until you call up and request for it to change. So I can only assume that these charges may have been similar for months on end, but I could be wrong.
I would, I would think you are wrong.
So I'm asking that that be, that these sorts of issues be addressed in zero-based budgeting, and I appreciate your time on this. I'm also asking, then, that during this process, that in the benefits review, that you guys do a dependent audit. Most companies do that. I don't know if other municipalities do it, but every one to two years, you audit the number of dependents, you audit their qualifications, are they under the age of twenty-six? You know, do they have insurance coverage somewhere else? So I'm just asking that, because it could be the same kind of thing, where people are having dependents who potentially, you know, should have rolled off the books.
Ma'am, I attest that that is absolutely happening, but that is being done.
A dependent audit?
Yes, but I'm saying that there's evaluation every year.
Okay.
Commissioner Tucci's department does it, he has somebody on it, and people are getting knocked off when they turn twenty-six.
Okay, that's great.
I don't know about the audit, but I'm telling you that the process is actually in work.
And I appreciate that, and that's good to know. In terms of the budget, I'm hoping and I'm requesting that there be a town hall meeting for the two thousand eighteen budget, and that we have that in April. You know, I think the budget is presented sometime in the spring. And, you know, I'm requesting that that happen for the town and for the citizens of Nutley. So number one, they can understand what zero-based budgeting is. And number two, they can get in and see what's really being done in terms of deciding and justifying, you know, what funds should be allocated for projects and for running the business of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Michael Ogero, one thirty-three High Street. From what I understand, there's an application for more apartments to be built across the street from the Nutley Post Office on Franklin Avenue. Am I correct on that?
That's correct, Mike.
Okay. I just want to say, I don't know who the developer is, but I want to publicly say to this developer, and who's ever fronting the money for this, this town had a vote on December 12th to not allow a $70.4 million BOE referendum to pass, because, so, people think that our schools need to be expanded because our schools are getting overcrowded, our public schools in this town. I would think that not only this developer, or any other developer, would think, maybe we shouldn't do this in Nutley, because the town has said overwhelmingly in this vote, we don't want anything that would cause our small town and our small public school system to get overcrowded even more than it is. So I would strongly suggest, whoever this developer is, someone here has to speak to him and say, look, maybe we should not do this in this town, because the people of this town have spoken. Not only do we don't want to spend more money on our public school system to the tune of $70.4 million, but don't allow anything that would help contribute to our public school systems get even more overcrowded than it is. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing now, could I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss, Mr. Geno Tempo?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Personnel. And litigation.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of public for meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss personnel and litigation. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal, personnel, contractual matters, and other matters with exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Tucci.